Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Carey, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. If you're in the building, please make your way to council chambers. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall once again. There are now eight members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Sikowski, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. We do need ten members for a quorum, but prior to officially convening the meeting of the city council, as is customary, on Fridays we do allow time for presentations and other special tributes. So we can begin with that and officially call the roll when the quorum is present. So we'll begin with today's presentation, and I see we have some very special guests already lined up at our microphone from the Los Angeles Police Department. I'll turn it over to you first.
We can do this with music first.
Good morning. My name is Sergeant Bruce Bogstedt. I'm the manager of the Los Angeles Police Pipe Band. Today with me I have Pipe Major Steve McGarrettie, Drum Sergeant Callum Hanna, and Kyle Lumston. They'd like to play a tune for you now.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for a presentation. Because we have a pinch hitter here, Mr. Garcetti.
We're actually going to honor the pipe band if they'll come forward first. For those of you who attended or who watched Sunday's candlelight vigil here at City Hall, one of the most moving parts of it was our very own Los Angeles Police Pipe Band, who played so beautifully during the riderless horse part of the ceremony. But for those of you who may not have been exposed to the pipe band before that time, let me tell you a couple things about them. We have one of the best pipe bands in the country here. This year marked the band's return to the competitive arena. It won a total of six first-place trophies and completely swept its division at all major California Highland Games: Costa Mesa, San Diego, and Pleasanton. This is the first time and single-best season record ever in the band's history. So first it was the Sparks, now it's the Pipe Band. Financial support for band activities comes exclusively from private donations. Neither the city nor the department contribute to the band's expenses. They're completely self-sufficient. Today we are going to be presenting a few certificates, but a couple other things about the pipe band. They're composed entirely of civilian volunteers. They play under Pipe Major Steve McGarrettie and Drum Sergeant Callum Hanna, and they've played together as a unit for only five months, which makes those victories, I think, all the more impressive. The band's musical skills weren't the only thing in a recent competition that had the people cheering. Their kilts, and I direct everybody's attention to the beautiful kilts here modeled by our players, are woven in the new Los Angeles Police Pipe Band tartan. Now, they drew spectator applause just simply for their beauty. First introduced by a band contingent appearing at Parker Center memorial services, the tartan features the deep blue of the LAPD overlaid with intersecting stripes of red, gold, and green from our very own flag of the city of Los Angeles. And as the official pipe band of the city of Los Angeles, they represent not only the department, but the city whenever they perform. So it's my pleasure today to give, first, a resolution to the pipe band in honor of the recent victories, which will be accepted today by Sergeant Bruce Bogstedt. And some individual certificates, first for Pipe Major Steve McGarrettie. For Pipe Sergeant Charles Lumston, and his son Kyle will be accepting today. For Pipe Sergeant Charles Lumston, and his son Kyle will be accepting today. And Drum Sergeant Callum Hanna. And in a bit of a surprise, we also have a special certificate for Sergeant Bruce Bogstad himself, the manager. If I can just briefly the resolution or a piece of the resolution. Sergeant Bogstad, with perseverance in the face of many obstacles and unwavering dedication, has always strived to follow the Pipe Band's stated mission of representing through music both the Los Angeles Police Department and the City of Los Angeles at local, state, national, and international venues. And whereas under Sergeant Bogstad's leadership and guidance, the reorganization and rebuilding of the Los Angeles Police Pipe Band and the Los Angeles Police Band Activities, Inc., have yielded exceptional and outstanding results in both the Pipe Band's musical achievements and its ability to project a positive public image on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and the City of Los Angeles. And whereas Sergeant Bogstad has given freely and generously of his personal resources and time, without thought of compensation or reward, in pursuit of this goal, which has helped to ensure that the Los Angeles Police Pipe Band continues to represent the highest traditions of the Los Angeles Police Department and the City of Los Angeles, we present this resolution to you.
Now we're ready for a speech.
Not very often police officers get a loss of words. I just want to say that it's been a long uphill battle to get this band going. The Los Angeles Police Pipe Band has been in existence for over twenty years, but this band has been working only together for five months. There's four grades in world competition, one through four, one being obviously the best. We're currently ranked as a Grade Two band. The only way you can move up is to go to Scotland to the World Games in Glasgow. Next year, we're going to try to go, if we can raise enough money, to represent the City of Los Angeles and the Police Department, and hopefully move into Grade One and be the first Grade One Police Pipe Band in the entire United States. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Commander Betty Calhoun, commanding officer of Personnel Group. I'm here on behalf of Chief Parks and all the women and men of the Los Angeles Police Department who are so very proud and honored to have this Pipe Band with us. One of the things that we live with as police officers is that often we have funerals for our officers, and these individuals play at our funerals. And I recall something one person said, a sergeant on the job, who said that his child was watching the funeral of an officer, and then later heard a Pipe Band playing Amazing Grace, and the child said, Daddy, there's your song. And the sad thing about it is, we hear them mostly when we're burying a police officer. But we should remember that when they're playing the reels, they also can bring our spirits up, and that's what they do for us in the Los Angeles Police Department. And so I'm very proud and honored to be here to congratulate them for their victories in the Highland Games and also for their wonderful job they do for all of us in the city every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and congratulations to all the success of the Pipe Band. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, we call your attention to our very, very special guest in our midst today. He is none other than the Honorable Terry J. Hatter, a familiar name and face to many of you. Judge Hatter has been the chief United States District Judge of the Central Division District of California since March of 1988. Some of you will know and appreciate it as the largest federal district in the nation, serving some seventeen million people. Judge Hatter was appointed to the United States District Court in 1979 and has created a distinguished career over that twenty-two-year period. Yesterday, Judge Hatter passed the gavel, as they say, and stepped down from his post as chief judge of the Central District of California. But the good news is that he will continue to serve as a trial judge for the foreseeable future and continue to distinguish himself as one of the nation's greatest legal minds. Judge Hatter received his undergraduate degree in government from Wesleyan University in Connecticut, went on to pursue his law degree, and completed that at the University of Chicago School of Law. One of his most memorable and distinguishable contributions from his post was that of serving as the overseer in the implementation of the consent decree for the Metropolitan Transportation Authority in 1996. And many of us took close note of his stellar work in that regard. A difficult task, but it must be said that he handled that fairly, even-handedly, and admirably. He is intimately familiar with Los Angeles City Government, having served under then-mayor Tom Bradley as executive assistant and director of the Criminal Justice and Planning, and later as special assistant to the mayor and director of urban development. But his career extended well beyond the walls, has extended well beyond the walls of his courtroom and local government. Judge Hatter has made a career of being involved in various community activities concerning legal services and education. Currently, he chairs the Board of Counselors of the University of Southern California Law School, Law Center, rather. He is a member of the Board of the Western Justice Center Foundation, member of both the Board of Overseers of the Rand Institute for Civil Justice and the Board of Trustees at Mount St. Mary's College. Additionally, Judge Hatter is a member of the Pacific Council on International Policy. He has been chairman of the California Advisory Commission on Legal Services Corporation, a board member of several other institutions, not the least of which is Richmond, California Unified School District, a trustee at Wesleyan University, and visiting, a member of the Visiting Committee at the University of Chicago Law School. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a distinguished member of our community with us today, and I'm very pleased to present him this presentation on our behalf and to thank you, Your Honor, for serving our community as well as you have over these many years, having distinguished yourself and by so doing distinguishing us, and we look forward to your continued service over the years to come. Members of the council, the Honorable Judge Terry Hatter.
Your Honor, before speaking, at least one of my colleagues who also wishes to say a few words to recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is such a tremendous honor for me personally to be here today as the city honors Judge Hatter, because I served as an assistant United States Attorney across the street and appeared in front of Judge Hatter on countless occasions. I never had a trial in front of Your Honor, but I had many other matters in front of you, and it was always, it was more than a delight. It was really a true honor to appear in your courtroom, because your courtroom, amongst all the courtrooms across the street, really stands alone when it comes to dignity and respect and a proper appreciation for what it is to be in a United States court. And it started, you know, it's not just the manner in which you conduct yourself on the bench and the manner in which you issue your rulings, but just the way in which you control your courtroom. And I have to tell you, Your Honor, that it's been an adjustment for me over here. I think there are some gum chewers out there right now, and they couldn't get away with that on the Spring Street side across the street. I also have always admired your courage as a jurist, and my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, correctly points out your seminal role, the role you continue to play in the MTA matter, a matter which I will never forget, is your courage in the matter of, I believe it was the Navy employee, was it Keith Minehold? Is that the correct name? At a time in the early 1990s, when the military was so intransigent, as unfortunately, in many respects it still is today, in the area of homosexual rights, you issued that pathbreaking decision that really, really brought national focus to such an important issue, and it took a lot of courage to do that. As someone who greatly appreciated all the courtesies you extended me over the years, it's a real tremendous privilege for me to see you honored today, Judge Hatter. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much.
Your Honor.
Mr. President, members of the council, and Chief Administrative Officer Ron Deaton, who's a good friend with whom I work continuously on matters that are appropriate both to our court and to our city. Could I first of all introduce some of my staff who are here with me? Betty Escobar, my longtime secretary, who was with me at Superior Court, has been with me for twenty-two years at this report. Next, my administrative law clerk, Sonia Augustine. My senior law clerk, Richard Smith. And a student law clerk, we call them externes, Patrick Avigan. A judge is only as good as his or her staff, as you know. But I particularly want to thank Councilman Ridley Thomas, who is a dear friend, and also Councilman Jack Weiss. And I told him I was so delighted to see him here. And I see now the only person that I ever used to see when I was over here, and he's soon to be leaving, I understand, but Joel Wax, another old and dear friend. I have a real sense of deja vu, because I used to come here and stand at this lectern and have fifteen old people dump on me, and there's only one old one left here, and he's about to go. Back when I was working with Tom Bradley, I had that distinct privilege in working with the council. And I want to thank you so very much for what you're doing for the city and for the entire community, particularly at a time of national tragedy, which I think, out of all of that agony, is going to bring us closer together as a nation. And indeed, this is the most diverse city in the history of recorded man, and we want to make sure that we have the right kind of leadership to take us into the new millennium, to go beyond acts of terrorism, to indeed bring people together, people of various religions, ethnic groups. And I know that you can do this, in spite of your agreeing to sign on to this today. I'm sure you have even better judgment to do the things that are most important for our city and for our community. I look here and I see a number of young people who I'm sure are students, and I, again, I applaud you for having the students here. It's so important that they learn the messages of a free society and understand too that judiciary is really the backbone of a free society, an independent judiciary as we have in the federal system. And I certainly urge you and your teachers to come next door, just next door, to 312 North Springs Street, to the United States Courthouse. We'd love to have you come anytime. And again, let me thank you all. I greatly appreciate this honor, and it is that. Thank you.
Mr. President, it now gives me a great degree of honor and to bring one of our premier employees on behalf of Mr. Burnson to the podium, acknowledging her retirement, the one and only Christine Heffron. Please come forward. Retiring from the position of chief of the city clerk's election division. Chris has managed the election division since 1992, implementing new, many new procedures and programs to accommodate the ever-changing election process. She has managed the second-largest election in the state of California and has been the longest-serving manager of the city's elections since Walt Peterson, who served from 1969 to 1984. Chris's last two elections, the April and June 2001 elections, were the most difficult because of the problems that developed in Florida. She and her staff created several programs to address the CHAD problem, including education for our voters and our precinct workers. She also reemphasized the city's provisional voting process to ensure that voters were not turned away from a precinct without being able to vote. Chris is retiring from the city, but she is not leaving the election field. She is moving over to the county registrar's office to manage the largest election in the state of California. We wish her the best in her new position and know that the county and the city will continue to cooperate to ensure that our voters have the best elections possible, and we do that with great admiration for her years of work. The county's gain is our loss, but we do not see it as a complete loss, as you will be within our reach. We will now hear from the city clerk for his remarks, and then we'll make the presentation to Ms. Heffron.
When you look in a phrase book and you see the phrase "out of the frying pan into the fire," there is going to be a picture of Chris Heffron right next to that. When you think she's leaving the second-largest election, she had to find 2,300 different locations to staff and hire approximately 11,000 people to conduct our elections. She's now going to a jurisdiction where she's going to get to find 5,000 different locations and hire 25,000 to 30,000 people. So I used to question her sanity a lot anyway in staying in the election division. I think there really is some question now about what she's doing. I suspect Connie wants her over there, so Connie doesn't have to take all the blame for the election process. But Chris has done an heroic job. We've shared a lot of good times, we've shared a lot of bad times, but again, this process, as I described it, is at best managed chaos, and she's come through with flying colors. Both she and I were not as gray as we are today, primarily because of the election process, but Chris has pulled together a very good staff. She's had to deal with some interesting problems over the years, and she truly is an excellent manager. Connie McCormick is getting an excellent number-two person for the election process. And Chris, I don't think she's looking forward to replacing the punch card system, but that's going to be on the radar screen fairly soon, and we'll see how that goes. Now that we have her over on the other side, I'm sure the cooperation will continue. And again, Chris, on behalf of me and the election division staff and the voters of Los Angeles, thanks for a wonderful, wonderful job.
For now, therefore, bid resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor and the city clerk, hereby commend Christine F. Heffron on thirty-two years of exemplary service for the City of Los Angeles, and extend to her and her family their very best wishes for health and happiness during your next phase of your career in public service. Chris?
Once again, you must have done such a great job. We have a couple colleagues who wish to make some remarks. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
I just want to take this moment to thank Chris.
I just want to take this moment to thank Chris. I've met her back in 1991 during the elections of the previous administration. And this last election, we all have defining moments during our experience in those heated hours at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. And who do you find but Chris, composed, knows where everything is at, where everything is supposed to be? And especially when you have a recount, and you get by it by one, actually, you gain a vote, and it was all done legitimately, you really appreciate the work, the effort that the crew in the city put together. And Chris was one of the main stewards. I just want to thank you, Chris, for all of your work and your dedication and your professional stance and your approach. And again, thank you so much.
Chris, I know that in my particular election, I received a call from you on a Saturday afternoon at 3:24 announcing that I had won that election. And I know that dealing with the office under your guidance, it was always smooth, efficient, courteous, very polite. And I wish all city departments could have the operations as you have. And I know from my colleagues' point of view, who've gone through elections, dealing with the city election division, you have been premier and paramount in giving us the comfort and the reasonableness and the understanding. And I'll never forget that Saturday afternoon when I received that final call, which made me jump 12 feet off the ground. But good wishes to you in the future. And you did a tremendous job in your 30-plus years of service to the people of Los Angeles and the elected officials of the city. God bless you. Thank you.
Ooh, wow. This city has been very good to me for 32 years, and I started out just planning on working for a couple, and the couple ended up being 32. And it has been a wonderful time, and I have learned a great deal, I have grown a great deal. And this city has treated me very well, and I've appreciated all of the opportunities for growth, all the opportunities for change. And I'm very happy that I've been able to provide something that is of lasting significance for the city, and that I've had a hand, however how small, in making sure that people are elected, they are elected fairly, and that the process has served the citizens of Los Angeles in the best way possible. I thank you very much for your kind words.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before proceeding to the next presentation, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Glanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And now I can officially welcome everybody, not only to City Hall, but to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 21st, years 2001. Council meetings can also be viewed live on your cable stations, Channel 35, or via webcast on www.lacity.org. And certainly, we continue to be heard via council phone. We have a few more presentations today. I'd like to call, before the next presentation, if I can ask everybody to please rise. We're beginning a new tradition here in council meetings with a pledge of allegiance at each and every one of our council meetings.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant. I'd like to call next Councilmember Pacheco for a presentation.
Mr. President and colleagues, I just wanted to bring up a very special young woman, or I should say, young girl, from Boyle Heights, Analisa Cassandra Mejia. And I also want to share with everyone that we don't always have to wait until someone has a long distinguished career to recognize them. Analisa is going to be participating in the People-to-People Student Ambassador Program for the 2002 summer in Australia. She is a student or graduate of Sunshine Elementary this past spring. I brought her up here to encourage not only her to continue working hard and achieving further excellence in education, but as a proven example of what our young are doing today in Boyle Heights and to inspire other young children in Boyle Heights. She graduated as one of the two finalists of the Frank Salazar Foundation Scholarship, which is a very distinguished honor. She's also received, she received the award because she wrote a speech about her love for her school, her teacher, Mr. Bryant Wheat, her successes at Sunrise Elementary, and, most important, her desire to become a doctor. She is not only talented in her studies, but she also likes to play sports and has earned great recognition for her athletic ability. I would like to congratulate Analisa Mejia for being an excellent student and for being a true role model to others. I also want to congratulate Mr. and Ms. Mejia for raising such a fine example of a young girl in our community. I'm going to turn over the microphone to Analisa, who wants to share a few words. She was a valedictorian at her elementary school, and I want her to share her speech to you that she gave to her students. So let me turn over the microphone to Analisa.
I'd like to thank the president and the councilmen, and Councilman Pacheco. I'd like to read you my speech of Sunrise Memories. It has been an honor and a great privilege to complete fifth grade at Sunrise Elementary. I would like to thank Mr. Wheat, Ms. Manrique, and the school staff for their guidance and support through this year. I have come to Sunrise Elementary for one year, but a great memorable year. I started out in Room 27 and was moved to Room 22. I had a chance to make friends in both classes. One of the great things was being with my friend Irene, who has been my friend since I was two years old. Everyone welcomed me and made me feel comfortable. This was my first year in public school, and I thought making friends and being happy would be hard. Sunrise has given me experiences that will make me a better person. One great experience was science cap in the mountains. Another great experience was our class production of cats. And the greatest experience was my teacher, Mr. Wheat. Mr. Wheat has made learning fun and exciting. His belief and view of learning makes the hard stuff easy. I know my one year at Sunrise has been a short stay, but it has helped me to be a better student. Being a better student will help me get to medical school, and I know now this dream will come alive as the years go on. Thank you.
Analisa, on behalf of my office, I want to congratulate you on doing such a fine job at Sunrise Elementary. And as I tell all of my nieces and my daughter, yes, being a doctor is probably the best profession you should pursue, and I say that as a lawyer. So, good luck, and thank you for coming by and sharing those words with us. Mr. President and colleagues, I also like to bring up Jose Montalongo Jr., one of our staffers and employees at the Youth Opportunity Movement. He was born in a small suburb in Chicago, Illinois, moved to Los Angeles with his family. I am presenting this award to him for his outstanding commitment and dedication and hard work to the East Los Angeles Youth and Family Center and to the residents of Boyle Heights. As a high school student, he mentored students, registered voters, held blood drives, and participated in community purification projects and the mural project that distinguishes Roosevelt High School with pride of its surrounding and founding environments. Prior to working with the Community Development Department in Boyle Heights, he worked with the young people in Watts through the Kulik Youth Opportunities Program. At the Kulik Youth Opportunities Program, he became the youngest community outreach coordinator in the history of the program. When the funding for this program was cut, Jose and his supervisor began a writing campaign in support of the program. Because of these letters, which reached the Secretary of the Department of Labor and our local Congresswoman, the program was able to continue and expand to what today is known to many as the Youth Opportunity Movement. Jose then returned back to Boyle Heights and went from being the East Los Angeles Youth and Family Center's Outreach Coordinator to the evening ESL teacher and continuation schools liaison. During the holiday, Jose helps distribute food and toys to over 300 families. What impresses me most about Jose is that he does everything because of the smiles and the kind words of appreciation that he receives from the residents. He tells me that this is what makes all the hard work and sacrifices worth it. He has the same motivation and drive today that he's had from his first day of work. It's people like this that really make a difference and really make our city the city of angels. I want to finish off by saying that many of his coworkers and constituents have given me great comments about Jose. He does everything with a smile and is willing to help again. I want to thank Jose for being an excellent leader and hope that he will continue with the Community Development Department for many years. We need people like him to remind us of what it means to be of service. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my office, I want to give you the certificate of appreciation to Jose Montalongo for all your great work. Thank you so much.
First of all, I want to start off by thanking the Community Development Department for giving me the opportunity to do what it is that I do. I would especially like to thank Ozzy Lopez, the East LA Youth and Family Center manager, for having the confidence and trust in me and the responsibilities of the everyday life at the East LA Youth and Family Center. Of course, I would like to thank my family and friends for all their support. And I want to accept this certificate on behalf of the entire community of Boyle Heights and East Los Angeles, for it is them who truly deserve this certificate. They're the reason why we wake up every morning and do what we do. They're the reason why we spend those extra hours at our center trying to figure out different ways to service them, not only their families, but their young people. And it, in fact, is them who wake up every morning bright and early to take our ESL courses or take our computer courses. So I want to accept this on behalf of the entire Boyle Heights community in East Los Angeles, and I want to extend thanks to the entire city council this morning on behalf of myself and the entire Boyle Heights community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski for presentation.
Just like we had a longtime employee leaving the city clerk's office with Chris Heffron, we have standing with me today Richard Hart. Rich has been, look at this. Rich obviously has a fan club, and deservedly so. Rich has worked for 30 years for the city, the majority of that time in the city administrative officer's office. He is, in fact, he has worked with, if not trained, the city, three CAOs, including Dr. C. Irwin Piper, Keith Comrie, and our current CAO, Bill Fujioka. Members of the council, what I said yesterday, I've been on the Budget and Finance Committee for two years now and started there, not having a great sense of analysis, fiscal analysis, et cetera. And this is the man who is our keeper of the budget. He is the one who keeps us on track, tells us each week in committee whether or not something in the spending limit makes sense, how we're doing on the budget. I don't know really what we're going to do as he leaves. And not only has he done it well, he has done it making it explainable, understandable, and taking very, very complicated tallies of figures and lots and lots of columns and bringing it down to a common sense, real-world choice that we have to make. As I say, as we're looking ahead at the year ahead, where there may be lots of uncertainties in our budget and the need for a steady guiding hand, I think he is going to be very, very, very sorely missed. As I said, Rich has had 30 years of dedicated public service. He's got a UCLA bachelor's degree, Cal State University master's. He has worked not only through three CAOs, but actually now four mayors. He actually started when Sam Yordi was mayor of the city, then Tom Bradley, Richard Riordan, and now James Han. He's been so key and instrumental in the CAO in any number of projects that he has handled, with a very, very steady hand, incredible personality and ease in explaining things. But he has decided that it's time to retire, to spend more time with his wife Wendy and his children, Kevin and Kelly, and to pursue some hobbies. I think he's earned it, but I hope he's not going to be too far away, because as I say, I think both Mr. Fujioka and the rest of us are going to be looking to turn to him to help explain again those complicated issues, keeping our budget purse strings in check and with a steady hand, knowing that we're going to make it at the end of the year better than we started. So, Rich, it's really with great sadness that I am saying goodbye, but I do want to express our gratitude and our appreciation for your 30 years of service and your just incredible value to budget and finance and the city's budget process.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick comments. As you notice, there are staff in the city administrative office behind me, and they're here just because, for a number of things, not only to celebrate Rich's retirement, but out of their deep admiration, affection, and respect for Rich. Councilman Misakowski touched on something. He has been our budget officer for the past couple of years. And in that role, everything the city has done, from the services, our programs, everything has gone through his hands. And so with that, and through the hands of the CAO. And I joked today about, because of his efforts, Piperian works very well today, but that's a different story and a different joke. But what I wanted to come up here first and foremost is to recognize, Rich, because through his qualities, he is the epitome of the true and the consummate public servant. And also, because through my very interesting and very, I'll just leave it, interesting experience as your CAO, Rich has been the person that I'm absolutely dependent on. And there is, on each and every occasion, he's been there for me, he's been there for the office, and foremost, he's been there for the city. And with that, I wish him the best in his retirement.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Fujioka makes reference to the staff of the CAO being here. We'd like for them to stand as Rich makes his remark. Staff of the CAO, that's what you would give them a round of applause as they give Rich a round of applause, all right? Rich, you brought your cheerleading session with you, so that's a good sign. Proceed, sir.
They're great, aren't they?
They are.
I think the world of them. Just to be very brief, I'd like to thank the council and Mr. Fujioka and all the staff for all the support that they've given me over the years. It's been a very exciting and rewarding experience. But more importantly, I'd like to thank my wife Wendy and my son Kevin and Kelly for being my support. They have propped me up over the many ups and downs that we've been through through 30 years, and without them, I absolutely could not have done it. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on behalf, and on behalf of the entirety of the body, we wish you our very best. Thank you very much.
Ms. Misakowski, we thank you. We now recognize Mr. Padilla for presentations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I'd like to call forward a group of students from my district, from Boquema Middle School, a choir known as the Boquema Singers. Are we ready? Let's come on up. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in welcoming to council chambers today the approximately 30 students, don't know if the entire choir is here, who are from Pacoima Middle School. The choir itself has been in place for many, many years, although this particular group of students has only been together for about three weeks. It was important for me to want to share this special presentation with you. When I first heard about it, the students, their director, Scott Mandell, and a friend, Wally Briskin, were so moved by the incidents from last Tuesday that they composed a song to express the feelings in their hearts and feelings that we all share from the tragedies last week. It was so touching and so powerful that they raised and caught the eye of CNN, who has since visited the school and taped the students in a performance that has yet to air, but I think we can anticipate it very shortly as part of the many, many tributes that we all see on television at the end of every day. Want to welcome the students for the presentation and make a special acknowledgement of their parents who are here also in support and ask them that they honor us with this song.
That's Pacoima Middle School. Give them another big round of applause.
Mr. Chair, colleagues, I thank you for these last few minutes. I, as you, have been witness to many tributes and testimonials and stories these last couple of weeks, but I think you'll agree with me that the message of that single flame that continues to burn at the Statue of Liberty, so beautifully expressed by this wonderful and diverse group of students, is just as powerful as any of the messages that we have heard in this last week, and how fitting it is that that hope and that symbol of liberty is being shared with us by young people, the symbol of our future, the symbol of the future of this country, and the future of our democracy. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. May I take a moment to acknowledge one of the administrators of the Pacoima Middle School, Mr. Aaron Mareski. Mr. Mareski is a longtime educator. I know that because he was a high school history teacher of mine at Manual Arts High. So give him a hand, Aaron Mareski. Ms. Msikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank Mr. Padilla and the students from Pacoima Middle School for coming down... I just, members of the council, this was moving. This is an incredible performing arts group. I have had the pleasure of seeing them perform at an event in the Mid Valley, for the Mid Valley Y. And if any of you get the flyer to go and see this group perform and see their creativity, their enthusiasm, their talent, we just got a wonderful sample of it, but let me tell you, it's one of the most worthwhile shows you will ever see, so keep your eye out for that flyer.
Here, here. Give them another hand, I tell you. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to be favored by a solo by the one and only Alejandro Padilla. Are we prepared to proceed with the next order of business, Mr. Clerk?
Approval of the minute.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Wise second. That will be the order in that regard. Another presentation? All right. Mr. Reyes has a presentation, Mr. Clerk. Are there other presentations? Because Mr. Padilla had indicated that he was the last presenter. All right, after Mr. Reyes, we'll proceed to the order of the business. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and Council members. That was a great presentation from our U. But members of the council, today I have with me some very special people, one of whom represents one of the jewels of my district, the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts, and the other who, for many, needs no introduction, because she is one of the most popular actresses of the Mexican film industry, Mercedes Mechecarenio. That with me today, because starting this evening and continuing through November 4th, the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts will be premiering the production of Salon Mexico. Said in 1936, the story illuminates a small slice of Mexican history at the infamous club nightclub located in Mexico City that revolves around a murder that took place at the salon during its heyday. This nightclub, which did exist, was similar to its European counterparts, where everyone from aristocrats to socialites, poets, and politicians would gather, kind of like the pantry. Just kidding. Only at night. But members, let me share with you a little bit about the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts. They were founded almost 30 years ago in 1973 and incorporated by Carmen Zapata, who many of you know, and they have been at the present location in Lincoln Heights since 1980. They have an annual audience of about 280,000 people. They were founded for the sole purpose of presenting Latino world drama to an audience of English and Spanish. While they will tell you that they came together in recognition of Latino cultural diversity, I can tell you that the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts is a celebration of our culture. Over the years, they have given voice to many young Latino and Latina writers and have presented a venue for the Latino community to all to tell its own stories, and for that I am truly grateful. So I want to present this certificate to Araceli Alvarez, who's representing Bilingual Foundation of the Arts.
Thank you very much. I'm the Managing Director of the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts. On behalf of its founders, Board of Trustees, and staff, I want to thank you, the City of Los Angeles, and of course, our district council member, Esraires, for recognizing the effort and the community service that the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts has been presenting to our community in Southern California. Thank you very much. And I have here posters, invitations for all of you to come and join us for this exciting production, and you will have a lot of fun, you will remember, some of you, what happened in Mexico during the thirties. And also, these productions are alternated in English and Spanish. It means that anybody can come and have fun. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Please, if I may, I'd like to also share with you a little bit about Mechecarenio. She has been the recipient of numerous awards and nominations for her artistic and dramatic achievements. El Ariel and El Erado de Mexico, which is Mexico's equivalent to an Academy Award nomination. She has represented Mexico at some of the world's most prestigious film festivals of Europe, including the Cannes Film Festival. She has starred in 17 pictures over her career, two of which she wrote and five of which she produced. She has performed in off-Broadway plays as a theater actress. She is a singer and a dancer who has studied with the finest maestros throughout the world. To say that we feel honored and privileged to have her in this council is an understatement. To tell her how grateful I am that she has lent her vast talents to the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts would not be enough, but I am truly grateful. So I'd like to present to you this very small token of my appreciation for what you are doing for our community and for what you have done for the artistic world on the whole. I would please ask to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I am very proud. I am very happy. I thank you very much. I appreciate it. I would like you to go and see this play, and it's full of passion, love, and if you want to have a moment of joy, you should come and be happy. I am very happy. God bless you. God bless America. I am proud to say that I am an American citizen too, and I am very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. I have also with us the Department of Parenting and Family Education. Members of the council, with me today are members of the Department of Parenting and Family Education, and they are members of what I like to think of as being the city's extended family. And that's because this particular department operates throughout the Los Angeles Unified School District. They are with me today for a very special reason. They are celebrating their 75th anniversary. You should know that this organization found its roots in 1926 as part of a Rockefeller grant to start up a Bureau of Parent Education, and was supposed to have started on an experimental basis under the Adult Division of the LAUSD. That experiment took off, and today, this department conducts its work throughout the entire city. It serves the constituents in my district and Franklin Community Adult School, Wilson, Lincoln Community Adult School, Belmont Community Adult School. Members, I think it was important that I bring them in today, because we, as a council, do have an impact on our schools, and of course, the schools have an impact on our constituents. So it's important for us to start recognizing the good work of the school, district, and its employees. I think it will only help facilitate that communication. And the truth is that we are all fighting the same battle. To accept this resolution on behalf of Los Angeles City Council, signed by myself and Councilman Mark Lee Thomas, I'd like to provide this certificate to Susan Garrick Cantor, Coordinator of Parenting and Family Education.
Thank you very much. President, council members, it's a pleasure for me to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Department of Parenting and Family Education, which is part of the Division of Career and Adult Education through Los Angeles Unified Schools. Parenting education, it touches us all. Not everyone is a parent, but all of us were children, and many of us had the experience of being nurtured by positive adults. Others, however, have had the yearning to be nurtured by positive adults. Our children are our most precious resource. Their parents are the nurturers and the educators, and therefore, for three quarters of a century, 75 years, our department has supported the desire and the need for parent education. We have throughout the district 34 courses and many varied kinds of programs. I thank you on behalf of the department and also the division for the recognition of our 75 years of work of providing education for parents. We need that recognition. It motivates us to continue our responsibilities, and we are motivated. Now, we ask you also for your support, because after 75 years, many people are still unaware of parent education and our department. We have free classes. They're taught by credentialed adult educators with specializations in parent education all over Los Angeles. We need your support for parent education so that we can serve our diverse population of parents and children. Together, we will nurture the greatest resource that we have: our children. Thank you for this honor today. I would like to also just introduce Dolores Diaz-Cary, who's the Director of Instruction, our boss, and our support.
Thank you, Mr. President and honorable council members. On behalf of the Division of Adult and Career Education and our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Santiago Jackson, I would like to thank you for this recognition and to let you Dr. Santiago Jackson, I would like to thank you for this recognition and to let you know that adult education in Los Angeles is this year celebrating 120 years, and we are proud of our Department of Parenting Education in their celebration of the seventy-five years. Thank you for your support, and thank you for this honor.
Mr. Clerk, next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Han seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be addressed. Item number twenty-two, request from Council District Seven, this matter be received and filed.
Without objection, colleagues, receiving file item number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-five, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until September 28th.
Request to continue item twenty-five, colleagues, also without objection.
Item number thirty, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until October 5th.
Item thirty, colleagues, without objection, that shall be continued.
Mr. President, there's a few ordinances on the desk. Did you wish to consider those at this time?
Yes, while we still have twelve members.
Okay, items number three and four are items noticed for public hearing, and item number twelve is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Items three, four, and twelve, colleagues, are ordinances. Want to take advantage of the fact that there are still twelve of us here. I do not have cards from members of the public to speak on those items, so we shall deem the public hearing open and closed for items three, four, and twelve. Any members wishing to speak on items three, four, or twelve? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items three, four, and twelve. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved.
Mr. President, that brings you to the commission appointments. Item number five is a Transportation Committee report regarding the appointment of John Barbarian to the Board of Taxe Cap Commissioners.
Is he here? If we can call him forward. Thank you for your patience. Actually, I hope you enjoyed some of the presentations today. Colleagues before us is another commission nominee. A public hearing has been held in committee. Any members wishing to pose any questions or make any comments?
Mr. Barbarian, have you served as a commissioner before for the city of Los Angeles? First time. Do you live in the city of Los Angeles?
Yes, sir.
Is somewhere your address is posted outside of the city?
That's mail address because I live in Sherman Oaks.
That's your mail address, so you have two addresses.
No. It's the city of Los Angeles, but it's Beverly Hills P.O. Post Office. It comes through Mulholland Drive. That's why all the mail comes through Beverly Hills Post Office.
All right. What's been your background that would really give you interest in serving in a taxe cap commission, as a taxe cap commission? Do you have any experience at all? Any background, any, how do you develop an interest in this?
I mean, it's like everything else. I'm in business management and the management, that's really where I located. I belong to a lot of different boards, and I like to do my service to the city of Los Angeles.
Right. Have you read anything about the history of the taxe cap industry in the city of Los Angeles, bandit cabs or anything like that? Have you taken the initiative to read about any of that?
You know, I read some things, but I'm pretty sure I can learn a little bit more about it.
There's a lot to learn. I mean, I've been, I used to be chairman of Transportation Commission Committee for about eight years, and I must tell you that during that time, I discovered they have many, many problems in the taxe cap industry. One's stealing the other's rights and benefits, and bandit cabs operating within the city, legalizing some, and then they become bandits. You've got a big job ahead of you. That's why I set it up, took it apart, took it away from the commission itself and established a taxe cap commission, you know?
I'm gonna try to do my best.
But I would think that, when were you nominated? What day? A week ago, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, a month ago?
Approximately about a month ago.
About a month ago. I mean, if you're gonna make a contribution to this commission, to the city, I would think that they would have given you some documents, some things to read on right now.
They did, definitely.
Did you read them?
Yes.
Related to the taxi industry, like contracts and franchises and things like that? And some of those taxe cap drivers don't have driver licenses. I mean, contability, check and balance. You've got a big job in front of you. You have to do a lot of reading, and I would hope that you would do that in days and months and years ahead.
Well, I'm very good general in the business management, and I hope I'm, I'm hoping that I do my best.
Nothing to do with business management, need nothing, you don't have to be business manager. You just come in here, just committed, I'm gonna learn about this job, I'm gonna work hard at it. If you're a business manager, makes it easier if you commit it, that's fine.
I am committed, and I know I can do a good job.
This is, I've been picking on the taxe cap industry for a long time. That's what they say about me because I've made the statement before and until he can prove otherwise, we're in the most corrupt industries in the city of Los Angeles. Now, you have a big job in front of you, and I hope and expect that you'll do it.
I'll try to do my best, and I hope I can do the best job I can.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Barbarian, good morning. I just want to let you know, Councilmember Holden, that a friend of mine, Faith Salee, has actually tutored Mr. Barbarian's children, and it for sure is in the city of Los Angeles where his residence is, so wanted to confirm that for you. I rise in support of your nomination. I wanted to ask you one question, which was, in some areas of the city, it's still quite difficult to get a taxe cab to come to those areas. In areas where I represent, in the hills of Echo Park, there are some folks who are dependent on taxe cabs who have no other form of transportation, and I was wondering if we could count on you to be a voice to make sure that we really find some ways to make sure the taxi companies are serving all parts of the city.
Yes. Definitely. I think that's a very good idea because that's gonna be our job to try to see what we can do.
Just to bring your attention, that's continuing, and thank you very much, and I support the nomination.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and the confirmation. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number six is a commission appointment. It's a Transportation Committee report recommendation regarding the appointment of Howard Coleman to the Board of Transportation Commissioners.
Welcome, Mr. Coleman. Public hearing was held in committees, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
Colleagues, before us is the appointment of another commissioner, Mr. Coleman. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Oh, Mr. Coleman, how are you doing?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good, good. You want to do this job also, huh?
Yes, I do.
I see. Well, you, have you read the documents that this Department of Transportation gave you? Anything associated with your duties as a commissioner, as a transportation commissioner?
I've read the things I got off the website, and they just gave me this today.
Oh, they just gave you today?
Today.
When were you nominated?
I've, uh, three weeks, four weeks ago.
Three, four weeks ago? We have to talk to the Department of Transportation, and they, here in present, I mean, they just, they're not doing you justice. Number one, you have a lot of responsibility, like franchising, ambulance services, setting rates on what they're gonna charge patients and all to be transported, you know, and also traffic flow, congestion plans. You've got an awesome responsibility. Did you know that?
Yes, I did.
I mean, what people complain about the most is they came moving this city because traffic, bopper to bopper, back to back, and you're in a position to say to us that if we're gonna overdevelop in an area, it's, hey, you gotta have some transportation mitigation plans in place. You have to study and understand that. It's a big job. It's like doing a lot of work, more than you do now, that you get paid for, but for free. And I trust that that's what your commitment is, and that's why you accepted the nomination for this, as a commissioner.
Yes, I understand the responsibility.
It's a real big job. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Coleman, good morning. I just wanted to ask you a similar question, either if you had any ideas or if we could count on you to make sure that we continue to push for access in terms of service to all parts of the city by taxi companies, in my case, especially, you know, hills of Echo Park and other parts of the city that might be deemed by some to be dangerous, but nevertheless have folks that are dependent on taxe cabs.
Difficult for me to respond because I think the taxe cap commission deals with that particular issue, not necessarily the transportation commission. I understand you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Items number one and two on the regular agenda are items which are public convenience and necessity applications in Council District Five. A motion is required from the floor.
Okay, these items have been noticed for public hearing. I do not have any card from members of the public wishing to speak, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are alcohol license applications in my district, and I would move that they be denied at this time without prejudice so we can continue part of the process with respect to this.
And that's for both items one and two?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, motion to deny the applications, both items one and two, without prejudice. Is there a second? Mr. Garcetti, seconds. Any others wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Weiss's motion is adopted. Next item, please.
Items number seven through eleven are items for which public hearings have been held.
Colleagues, items seven through eleven, public hearings have been held. Any specials?
Nine, eleven special.
Mr. Holden calls nine and eleven special. Any other specials? Seven, eight, and ten, any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Items numbers thirteen through twenty-seven on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number twenty-two and twenty-five have been acted on.
As has item number twelve, I believe. And I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on any additional items in this area. Any specials? Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, we ask that nineteen S be a receivable file.
We'll take that as a technical amendment to item nineteen. Nineteen S will be receivable filed. Otherwise, the rest of nineteen stays in place. Any other specials? Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti calls twenty-six special. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes? Why don't you use that microphone there? Any other specials? Let's hold on a second here.
I just need to change the dates on B and F. I do this in a verbal fashion, where on B, I need to change to October 6th and 7th, and on F to September 23rd.
This is on item nineteen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll vote on those special event motions with the proper changes to the dates referenced by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number twenty-eight is an item noticed for closed session, and the city attorney has opined that that matter may be dealt with in open session.
Mr. Chair, just for the information of council, all that the city attorney is asking at this time is that the council designate the Director of Planning as the person, authorize them as the person to sign off on the settlement agreement which council has previously approved, and that would be all, and they could do that in open session.
Any members wishing to speak on item twenty-nine? Twenty-eight, excuse me, item twenty-eight. Seeing none, we have the city attorney's recommendation before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Let's send that forth with. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-nine is an item notice for public, excuse me, is a continuation agenda item. It's a public hearing has not been held, item twenty-nine.
And we do have one card on that item. Let's call that special.
Mr. President, that brings you back to item number nine, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Actually, let's take twenty-nine out of order because we have public comment on that, and we can dispense with that and let Ms. Cynthia Cooper come forward, offer her testimony, and go on about her day. Is Cynthia Cooper available? I guess she's left. Public hearing is then, oh, she's here. We'll hold it on the desk. Mr. Clerk?
Item number nine, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members on nine, can we get a staff report on that? Before I start asking questions?
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Rifkin with Department of Transportation. Item number nine is a request to approve a local implementation report on the congestion management program. This report-
Hey, would you just explain what a congestion management program is all about for the benefit of someone who might not know, including you?
In the Reader's Digest version is that-
No, no, I just want the version which we adopted a few years back.
The congestion management program is a program that's adopted by the county MTA, and it requires a cooperation of the local cities to report on debits and credits.
Before you go on, this is the program that was required by the state of California.
Right.
Okay, and it gave us an option of having our own congestion management program or co-mingling that with the kind of MTA. Is that not correct? And we elected to do that, is that correct?
Correct.
I think they, we need to know the background information, that's why I'm asking you to do that. I have some idea what it's all about, but a lot of folks might not. Go ahead.
Okay, so the requirement is that in order to receive gas tax funds from the raise in the gas tax in 1992, that we should cooperate with this congestion management program, and certain locations were designated part of a congestion management system, and if the city does something to improve traffic on those systems, they get a credit. If they do something to degrade traffic on those intersections, it's a debit. Approving new development is considered a debit. Because the city has contributed a lot of its local money to the Metro Rail Red Line and other improvements through the call for projects, the city has done a lot more to improve traffic than to decrease traffic, and so this biannual report reports that we have almost two million credits.
Okay, now what about the congestion management plan that relates to traffic mitigation, even though we come up with more development and more construction? Are we mitigating it, or are we getting credits for that as well?
We get credits for every developer-
Can you give us an idea what kind of, where we get credits for, other than just using some of our monies for Metro Rail, the Blue Line, et cetera?
If, for example, we approve a development and we require the developer to do traffic mitigations to improve the situation around the development, that's considered a credit.
Well, I just wanted you to explain it all. In fact, now we have six to two thousand ninety-two credits, and we pick up maybe coming year, another, the same amount, which gives us about one million nine hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred credits. That lets us develop some more property, have additional development, and maybe don't even mitigate because we already have enough credits. I mean, how you apportion a number of credits for a development project?
That, the apportionment of the credits would be an item that we'd have to bring to city council.
I mean, what's the formula is what I'm saying. How many square feet, what the footpad development, how many square feet you can develop in the project, how many debits do we get, credits, debits we're gonna lose, how much we'll be debited for, and that'll be subtracted by credits. Do you have any idea?
We don't have a unit cost of those debits because it's related to what the overall transportation improvement program is on MTA's long-range plan, and so we are revisiting with MTA the whole process of debits and credits.
Okay, thank you, but you will, you can come talk to me about that. I'd like to know more about it. All right, thank you. You're doing a good job.
Any other members wishing to speak? Mr. Holden, what's your desire here? Mr. Holden, what's your desire here? Then we have the report before us, and a motion to note and file. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And that will be the order. Next item, please.
Item number eleven, called special by Council Member Holden.
Item number eleven, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this is another report, saying note and file, and I need to have a report on this, Mr. President. About traffic tickets not being written by police officers, and the fact that we're 13,000 officers' days set aside for DNC and for training, and that's going to reflect in the general fund. So we're going to end up with a deficit, a shortfall, and with this discussion regarding the new compressed work schedule, this is directly related, and I think it should be put on the table for discussion. Anyone to report on this one, or should we just hold it over until Wednesday, so we can get a full report?
We could hold it over, Mr. Holden, if you would like, although there is a report that came from the committee and from the department, and actually, there is a new assignment of 40 E-cars. The one decline last year was attributable to the DNC, where so many officers had to go for a lot of other training, as well as assignment through DNC. So that was just -- last year was an anomaly. Other than that, the citations issued have essentially been increasing, and we're looking to maintain that. In committee, we did ask that this be reported back within six months on how the E-cars are working, whether or not we've been able to maintain the E-cars, which are new traffic patrol cars, not motor officers, but the black and whites, and the expectation is that they would increase the traffic citations by about 50,000 a year. So if we wait till we get the next report back in six months, then we'll have a marker midway through our fiscal year.
We're talking about red light enforcement, we're talking about the number of police officers that's deployed, and that 50,000 shortened citations is going to affect the general fund, it's going to be reported back to Budget and Finance. This is a very complicated report, and is going to impact on what we do here. So I would say that in order for me to get some additional information to discuss, it's a correlation, Mr. President, directly with the compressed work schedule, and what happens in a crisis situation, which redeploy police officers to perform other duties. And so I'd like to, with your consent, hold this over until Wednesday, because we're not here on Tuesday, and to give me an opportunity to -- because I didn't hear this matter, I was not in the committee, to get a better profile on what we're talking about here, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden moves to continue until Wednesday.
Right.
Mr. Zine. Ms. Sikowski. Then, without objection, item eleven is continued.
Until September 26th.
Next item, please.
Item number twenty-six, called special by Council Member Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Holden, for this resolution, which declares the week of September 18th to 24th as Pollution Prevention Week in the city of Los Angeles. I wanted to add, if possible, a friendly amendment to this, that for the next year that this is done, this was just the past week, I believe, in terms of the date, that we instruct the city clerk to double-side all the reports that we get. As I understand, I was going to add this amendment as something to encourage this new policy, but I've been informed that we have a policy right now that all transmittals, all copies that are made should be already double-sided. This may seem like a small thing, but when we see the volumes of paper that comes across our desks, we really need to make that effort to bring into compliance. I mistakenly thought this was for a future week, but I'm seeing that this is this past week. So actually, why don't we add a friendly amendment, instead of for next year, that for next week, we try to comply with that for one week?
Add for one week that we try to get double-sided copies from the clerks for everything we get. Okay? You good? Second?
So Mr. Garcetti has a motion as an amendment. Mr. Ridley Thomas, second. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Mr. Garcetti's motion. Doesn't seem to be any objection, let's take a vote on the entire matter with the changes offered by Mr. Garcetti. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-nine is being held on the desk. Could there be a member of the public wishes to speak?
Okay, item twenty-nine, Ms. Cynthia Cooper has submitted a speaker card. We'll call her forward at this time. Ms. Perry?
I'm going to go to the middle table also.
Okay.
I'm going to introduce some additional language on this, because I think we've reached a resolution.
Okay, we can call the department forward while we hear from Ms. Cooper. Ms. Cooper?
Yes, good morning, and thank you to the honor council members for hearing our motion here today. We're contesting the -- or actually, we're filing a protest and objection to the assessment for that property located at 1215 West 41st Street, for the fencing and barricading, the amount that was assessed. The problem is, I'm representing my client here today, Tony Boone, who was a private attorney for the legal owner, that being James Reynolds. The problem is, is that Mr. Reynolds entered into a contract specifically with ABZ Construction Company, and they were supposed to, within the scope of that contract, they were supposed to have necessitated all repairs, including the barricading and fencing. They failed to perform their services. During an arbitration hearing, my client had to pay them an amount in excess of $13,000 for work that they never performed, and it is his opinion that ABZ Construction Company should be penalized for the assessment of the fencing and barricading, based on the fact that they entered into a contract to perform that work, and they did not.
Okay, thank you, and I do believe we have further response from staff and the council member of the district.
I'd like for the department to speak.
This concludes the public hearing on this item. Call on Ms. Perry and begin with a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, council members. Mr. President, the Department of Building Safety has no problem with a waiver of the 40 percent administrative cost due to the problems that the owner of record had with their contractor.
All right, and the department and the representative Ms. Cooper, for her client who's here behind her today, all right, they've reached an understanding, and I'd like to put this into the record, that the department has agreed that due to the fact that the owner of record for this property was unjustly charged for work which was not done by the private contractor, they have agreed that 40 percent are the administrative costs associated with this action, which amounts to $2,974.37, be waived, and I believe there's some additional points about an installment arrangement. Am I correct?
Well, that would be handled by the Department of Public Works once council has confirmed the assessment.
Okay. All right, so then we'll work on that issue through the Department of Public Works. And that'll be a condition of this resolution. Is there anything else?
No, there's nothing else from me.
So we'll adopt your language as a friendly amendment to the resolution.
And we should probably refer this to the Public Works Committee to finalize the issue of the installment repayment plan.
So you don't wish to take action today, or refer the item as amended to Public Works Committee?
Yes, forthwith, so we can resolve this quickly.
Okay, and this matter is therefore referred to Public Works Committee. Without objection. Mr. Clerk, next item.
A point of confusion, is the assessment being passed today, you just want to refer the assessment and the entire question to the committee, correct?
Correct. No action today by the council. We will refer it back to committee, along with the added language offered by Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, the only item left for the regular agenda is public comment. Did you wish to go into the special agenda at this time?
Yes, we have a one-item special agenda, I believe.
Yes. First item is to call the roll. Burton, Glanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Sikowski, Pacheco, Reyes, Perry, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla. There's 11 members present in a quorum.
Thank you. That brings us to the agenda of the special meeting. We will reconvene back to the regular meeting in a minute. We have a one-item special agenda. Mr. Clerk? Before you is a committee report from the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee and a resolution. So a public hearing has been held in committee. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, my rise in support of this motion to support SB 25, which is the domestic partnerships legislation before the governor right now, just to let you know what -- sorry, it's AB 25 would do. Allow domestic partners to relocate with a domestic partner without losing their unemployment benefits, do sick leave to care for a family member, to file disability benefits on behalf of an incapacitated partner, to provide partners with employer-based health coverage, to be exempt from state income tax, the health benefits provided to domestic partners, make a medical decision, as we know, for partners who sometimes are excluded from visiting folks in the hospital, who might be there for whatever reason, to act as a conservator or sue for wrongful death, administer partners a state, and register as domestic partners if one or both of the partners are over the age of 62. And a lot of people look at domestic partnerships as just something for the gay and lesbian community. It's actually, the highest number of domestic partners that we have in this state are elderly folks. This expands the rights of all folks, regardless of sexuality or age, and being able to cohabitate and to have certain rights that the rest of Californians enjoy. So I urge you all to support this. The governor has indicated that this year he will sign this, and it'll make us have the strongest domestic partnership law in the country outside of Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved, and we shall send that forthwith to the mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, there is one closed-session item, item number 31. Did you wish to recess the special meeting and go back into the regular meeting for public comment?
Let's recess the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting agenda. Before we go to public comment, the chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I ask for reconsideration of item nine. I made the motion at the very end, the note and file, and that was not the intent of the committee as relates to this item on the congestion management program. They just want to adopt a commenting resolution, and I saw a move, and then after that, make it forthwith, because it has to go to MTA.
Mr. Holden calls for reconsideration of item nine. Please open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item nine is reconsidered, and now before us, Mr. Holden moves a committee report. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Forthwith to the mayor, and thank you for straightening that out, Mr. Holden. That leads us now to the public comment period for today's meeting. Opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Council calls forward Mr. Mort Allen.
Good morning. I've come before you to bring this up, because I consider you all my friends. The whole country has come together. Democrats are kissing Republicans. Everybody's on the streets, getting together, and I really think that we kind of overlooked something. I think that our great body should invite the valley leaders, the people that have been questioning things in government, bring them all together down here for a candlelight vigil, and get everybody united together. I think that the time is perfect. It's working every place else in the country. I think that these people, I will tell you, if you were to see what's going on in the valley, I would say within 15 minutes after the event happened, I got a call from my friend Dennis Zine, and he said, "Can I get the billboard companies to put up American flags all over the city?" I called my college buddies that own Clear Channel in Texas, and I said, "I need a favor." And they said, "You always want a favor." I said, "No." I said, "You got a lot of billboards coming down, don't you?" And they said, "Yes." They're taking down -- every billboard in the city that had a violent movie on it has come down. All the airline billboards have come down. And I said, "How many empty big ones do you have?" He said, "200." I said, "Could you go and put an American flag up on everyone, just for unity in the city?" And he said, "Yes." In fact, I brought around pictures of it, so you could all see, but the first one's supposed to be going up to here tomorrow across the street, and they're going up all over the city. And so I called Dennis last Friday, and I said, "Okay, I got the billboards. You owe me a dinner, cheapskate." So he came out to Studio City last Friday evening at about 8:30, and you would not have believed it. There were at least 4,000 people on Ventura Boulevard that were marching with candles from Laurel Canyon to Van Nuys Boulevard. It was so jammed, we couldn't get in there. We went over to a little neighborhood restaurant, Casa Vega, and I'm going to tell you, Dennis, would you say there was 800 people in there? All with American flags, all drinking, partying, saying, "We're united as one." So I don't know how you want to do it, but I really believe the timing is right, and I think that there's a way to just intimidate this, to get rid of this whole dirty word of secession. So I just wanted to suggest that. Okay?
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Mr. Zine.
I just want to thank Clear Channel for donating those billboards, which will be going up throughout the city of Los Angeles, and encouraging everyone to fly a great American flag.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, currently before you is item number 31, which is a closed-session item.
In conformance with California code, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Guards, please clear the chambers.
Did you wish to clear the desk in the meantime?
In the meantime, let's clear the desk.
Motion for posting and referral?
Those motions are posted and referred.
Councilmember Zine requests a excuse from council attendance on Friday, October 26th and November 16th at 11:00 a.m. for city business. Both meet policy.
Mr. Zine is excused?
The desk is cleared, except for item 31.
Okay, we now go to executive session.
Mr. President, item number 31 is before you. It's a recommendation of the city attorney to settle this case in an amount of $125,000.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Let's send that forthwith. Next item, please.
The desk is clear.
Adjourning motions, please arise. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask us today to adjourn in the memory of Ronald Gamboa, Daniel Branhurst, and their three-year-old son, David. They died on the hijacked United Flight 175 from Boston to Los Angeles. The two of them had a 14-year relationship. They are founding members of LA's Pop Luck Club, a support organization for gay dads and their children. They are major supporter of the Family Pride Coalition, a national gay and lesbian family organization. Mr. Branhurst was an attorney, a partner at Price Waterhouse Coopers. Mr. Gamboa managed the Santa Monica Gap store. They are both residents of Hollywood Hills. They're survived by their large extended families. And just one other note, it seems that one or both of them were involved in the heroics to try to successfully prevent that flight from slamming into any populated area. And when you hear the comments of folks like Jerry Falwell talking about the responsibility for these things, and you actually see two gay-- for these things, and you actually see two gay fathers who are heroes, especially when we're talking today about AB 25, it really drives home how much all of us are Americans, and that heroes come in every form. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss wishes the second. All members.
Those are tough guys. Mr. President-
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of a young individual, Damon Muniz. Damon was a student at Sledgen High School. He was diagnosed with leukemia and passed away on September 19th. He fought his illness with grace, and even when he was diagnosed with the illness, he requested that, even though he couldn't attend school, that he be still kept on the school rolls because of his strong pride in being a Sledgen High School student. He really believed that he was going to overcome this illness and someday return to school. He's survived by his parents, Mr. and Ms. Ramon and Maria Muniz, his sister Juana Muniz, his aunts, uncles, and cousins. Obviously, the Sledgen High School student body is missing one of theirs, and Dolores Mission Church.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning today in the memory of Mark Dana Chesler, who died on Thursday, September 13th, this year of leukemia. He was 51 years old, and he was a scriptwriter for 10 years, but then he decided to change his course in life and decided to become an acupuncturist. That was based on his desire to do more for humanity by alleviating the pain and suffering of other people. He was also an herbologist, and he was very successful in helping people in this field. He leaves behind his parents, Eunice and Henry Chesler. He was the father of Galen Chesler Gold and the brother of Janet Chesler Johnson.
Ms. Perry wishes the second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.